Good afternoon and welcome to the December meeting of the City of Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. We do have a quorum today, so I announce that this meeting is called to order. You all should have received minutes of the regular meeting from November the 19th. Are there any changes, additions, corrections?
If not, the Chair would welcome a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The minutes are approved as written. Today, we have actually three people in our commission who are not here today, but in particular, we'd like to acknowledge that both Linda Anderson and Deborah Belcher are not feeling well, they're under the weather, and we send our well wishes to both of them and hope for a speedy recovery and to come back to the commission here as soon as they possibly can. We certainly do miss them. What is our first bit of business, Amelia?
The first item of business, well, the only item of business we have for today is at 2255 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Mr. Holland Fletcher is requesting a final review for construction of a new two-story detached garage with a guest room and additional fencing on property located at 2255 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. This property is located at 2255 Middle Tennessee Boulevard and is adjacent property to the north is the MTSU Alumni House. The property is owned as single-family residential RS-10 district within the East Main Street Historic District. As you all may recall, at the October 15th, 2019 meeting, the Historic Zoning Committee voted to approve the request to demolish a shed and carport and removal of a tree to make way for this future construction on the property. At the November 19th meeting, the applicant appeared before the commission to present a preliminary design for the proposed front elevation of the new construction consisting of a two-story detached garage in order to receive input from the commission before proceeding with a total architectural design. At that meeting, it was determined that the proposed two-story detached garage architecture and materials would replicate the existing dwelling unit. The owner of the home was also present at that meeting, and he did state that he was happy to say that he did not have to demolish that beautiful tree in the back of his home or take it down, he just had to remove some limbs from it, and we're glad to see that that tree was able to be saved. And the applicant is requesting final approval for the two-story detached garage with a guest room, deck, additional fencing in the rear and the front of the property. The final elevation drawings for the floor plans, building material specifications, including lighting fixtures, doors, windows, and roofing are included in your agenda materials. Also included in the agenda materials is a concept plan for the fencing additions and specifications. At the July 2017 Historical Zoning Committee meeting, the property owner, Mr. Jeff Davis, proposed a fence along the front of the property to the commission, and that request was deferred at the time until the completion of the construction on Middle Tennessee Boulevard in order to adequately locate the fence from the road. The discussion at that time was for fencing in front of the house to be located 20-foot from the edge of the road and to be four-foot tall with landscaping in front. The applicant is requesting a five-foot fence, and the minutes from the July 18th, 2017 meeting have been included with your agenda materials as well. The applicant is in attending at the meeting today in order to answer any questions the commission may have regarding this request.
If the applicants would like to come forward and please state your name for the record, please.
Jeff Davis.
Fletcher Holliday.
Great. I think you've gone over it very well, Amelia. I'm not sure if y'all want to present anything else to the commission?
I'll move something.
Okay. What question?
I do have several photos that I could run through that are in your agenda. One of them in particular that'll come up on your computer is the layout. On the left-hand side here, you will see the portion that is the deck and the layout of the actual carport, the location of the existing fencing to be put in, or I'm sorry, adjusting of existing fence with the new building that's going to be built. They also have adjustments of existing fence on the north property line adjacent to the Alumni House. In the front, you can see where they are proposing to be able to put in fencing in the front of the yard to join the adjacent fencing, which is to the south of the property. If you look very faintly, you may not be able to see it real well, there is a yellow line that actually denotes his right-of-way line. It's a little bit difficult to see on this drawing. Again, I'm going to show you all of the elevations of the property, particularly the home. As you can see, they did do away with the Chippendales-style balcony patio fencing that they had previously and have put something that is a little bit more in that time era with those. And if you all have any discussion you would like to have about the building itself.
What questions does the commission have of the applicants?
One question I have is, can you tell us a little bit about the Never-Rot material, what it's made out of?
Yes, it's a composite material, full operational window system, but it's a composite material that's made to withstand years and years of weather versus a typical painted wood window. Looks wood, just is more composite material.
Do you have any idea what the composite is made of?
There's, it's a component of PVC and elemental glues and more similar to a deck board, trek board-type material, wood style system, but made to look like wood.
Thank you.
What other questions does the commission have?
Okay, well, I've got one more. Can you tell me, Mr. Davis, what purpose is the fence in the front yard? What are you hoping to achieve from that that's coming across the front of your?
We just get a lot of foot traffic, and it's just added security. My neighbor, I've noticed recently, nailed a no trespassing sign to the tree in her front yard. You know, we live on campus.
Yeah.
It's, our steps are convenient seats.
What other questions does the commission have?
So that fence out front is the iron look, the black fence that you?
Same that's across the courtyard now, Mr. Davis.
Okay.
Fluted.
Gotcha. See a picture in here.
We've got a landscape, there's going to be about a four-foot, our yard has a knoll, so there's going to, the fences would be at the top of our second step, which is the walkway leading up to the front door. That gets us 20 feet. And so we'll have about a four-foot strip between the fence and the sidewalk that will do some type of permanent landscaping, boxwoods or something like that, as low main as possible.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, I actually had several, and I'd like to try to focus first on the garage and then the front fence, the fence came before us once before. With the garage, you are adding to, or revising to existing fence sections, and in the packet there are two types of fences. One has little spikes or airheads on top, and the other does not. What will that fence be?
The reason is because there's two currently on the property, so this matches the back half, what we're adjusting, and so it's just a solid bar across the top.
Straight across the top, no pickets going through the top?
That's correct.
And it's painted aluminum?
It is, yes, sir.
So it'll match the same color, I'm assuming black and that kind of thing?
It'll match the, my back neighbor's fence too, Will. That's what he's got, so out of deference to him, we...
I think the design of the building is very nice. I particularly like the front, and I thank you for changing the Chippendale. I think this is a much more complimentary design to the structure and to your existing house. Although, we can only really review the elevations we can see from the sidewalk, the right-of-way, and I don't think, as you look at the plan, the side toward the tree, I guess, all of that's pretty much hidden, and this really, we couldn't see it, but I would offer to you, if you try to get into that garage, it'll be completely windowless and be dark. And I would offer to you, you might consider between those two doors that come from that porch and that first door, that you might put a window to the left, because it'll be fenced off to get light into that garage, otherwise you'll be fumbling around in the dark until you turn the light on. And I think that would be a benefit to you all to be able to see light going in there so you don't trip on anything. I did notice that the front door, that first door that I was talking about, is a fiberglass door, and we don't normally allow fiberglass in the historic district. Also, the windows that were brought up before, they note are PVC, so those are plastic in my common terms, and we typically only do wood windows. We have done metal clad on a detached garage once before, but typically it's wood. The windows we cannot see, we can't review. But I would suggest that the windows that face the right side to the north, there are no windows, and so there's nothing there to worry about, which we could see from the Alumni House. But there on the front, I would suggest that, at least to the commission, those are vinyl or plastic windows, and I worry about the fatigue of those windows over time. I don't know about PVC's performance, but vinyl tends to droop over fiberglass. I don't know where PVC fits in there, because I avoided chemistry in high school and college like the plague, so I can't tell you that. And certainly, the fiber cement board, we have approved in times past, so I have no concerns about that. I assume, I'm going fast just to not draw this out, the shingles will match your existing shingles on your house?
Yes, sir.
As close as possible. The other fence, I'm just going through the packet, shows five-foot fence, is that going to be the, wherever the new fence locations are, that are all going to be five feet?
Yes, sir.
And where will the spiked one go?
That's in the front yard.
Front yard, okay.
All right.
I think really those are the comments that I saw in doing this. I'd like to, if we can, get the commission's thoughts and potential motions and approvals, whatever, on the garage first, just because it's separate from the front yard since we reviewed the front yard some time ago. What are the commission's thoughts regarding the garage?
The reason I asked about the Never-Rot, Mr. Chairman, was we had approved at our house when we were on Main Street a composite material called Fiber-X. It wasn't PVC, but it was, I can't remember exactly the compound of it, but it, we have approved some composite materials other than wood.
Well, it was a ground-up, plastic vinyl, whatever that, plus ground-up wood, so it had a large content of wood in it, and that's why it was approved. It wasn't just plastic. This one on the cut sheet shows that the window itself is really all PVC except this wood material backup in the jam, and so to me, it's, a very small percentage is wood, and it's mostly plastic, PVC, whatever you want to call it. So I just bring that to your attention, and my concern is precedent it says that we're putting in a plastic window. But we have done, I can't remember the house, it's on Main Street, and it had metal clad wood windows, and we allowed that. So that's already a precedent.
We'll research and go through and pull the Fiber-X and even look at Anderson's Pella's for those.
Yeah. Anderson Renewal is the ones that has the Fiber-X.
I was going to say, yeah. I thought you got two different bids from two different folks then, didn't you? Or two different kinds of windows, and I wondered if it were the Anderson or the peach tree.
Well, in the early days, we were there, we used wood windows in the home itself, and they were, what's the other one other than Anderson?
Pella.
Pella, they were Pella windows.
Oh, yeah.
But when we built, when we enclosed the porch in the back, we went to Fiber-X, and that was Anderson Renewal.
It really looks nice, too.
Thank you for remembering the composite of that. It passed me by, but...
Yeah. It was, I'd say, I'm guessing, but closer to a 50/50 mix, and we're just trying to make sure everybody sort of does the same sort of thing. We realize we're being pressured as materials evolve and change to, we can't just stay with what we want, but we also don't want to, like in an existing house, just throw out old-growth materials that could be just, you know, cleaned up, repaired, and put back in. They're much better than the modern wood windows that you can buy, quite honestly. What other comments or questions does the commission have?
I think I would add comment, or ask for clarity here, we're really specifically speaking of the three windows on the front or eastern elevation that would face the road.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Those are the ones we could actually see and would have a ability to review and comment, the others we really can't see, to be fair. Now, if you had an alley behind you, we could see it, but we can't. You don't have one.
Other than material choices, I think the elevations look great. I think it complements the house, and I think it's going to be a great addition back there.
Any concerns over the fiberglass door at that recessed porch? I mean, it's set back.
On that southern elevation? Well, no, that's the, that's the eastern side.
I haven't done a sightline study to see it on the plan, to see if you can or not, but I just bring, it's set back. If it were out at the front face, you might very well could, but that one may not be visible.
Well, we'll take that the same as the windows, it's the front elevation, so that's easy enough.
And if you do put a wood window door in, it's covered, so it shouldn't be affected by the elements.
Right.
No further questions? The Chair would welcome a motion regarding the garage only and the associated fencing changes at the garage.
I would move to approve, with the exception of the windows and doors on the front elevation. Those, I assume, could be approved by staff as long as they're going to be of some material that's already accepted.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That part of the motion is approved. Let's talk now about the front fence. It's my understanding, and thanks to you, Amelia, that we approved it, no, we didn't approve it, but we suggested it be 20 feet back, it was four feet with a landscape border around it, and y'all were going to come back with more information at the appropriate time.
That was two years ago.
Is it two years?
We almost moved twice, and we had a lot of water over the dam since that, July, that meeting, and once we decided that we were going to make this investment and stay, then we wanted to revisit the fence.
What questions does the commission have of the applicants regarding the fence?
I'm curious why the five-foot fence in the front?
We're not going to take the fence down that is in front of the courtyard now, and I can't get in my mind going from a five-foot...
To a four.
To a four. And again, you know, we've got dogs, a little added bear here.
Gotcha.
Actually, you know, like, there's one, and of course, this is grandfathered in, but there's one on the corner of, on East Main that I think really looks good. I don't think it looks inappropriate.
No.
It's wrought iron, of course, it's original.
I think it's the style of the house and all that, it's just, like you say, it's just always been there.
Yeah.
I don't know when, if it was, if the fence was built at the same time as the house, I don't honestly know, but...
There's a fence just like this also, it's not in the district, but it's on the corner of Manny and Lydon, exact same fence. They must have had to get away where they're at the sidewalk, but then they don't have much yard. Their house is very close. I just, I like the look.
Yeah. My only fear in bringing, the reason I bring it up is I picture the elevation from the street, lower, and then your yard rises, and you've got a beautiful house, and I'd hate for that five-foot to obscure the view of it too much, and I get your point, not wanting to step it down, but I also wonder, it'll probably add just the same amount of security, you know, people aren't going to hop it nevertheless.
We hope not. We had three years of construction, the various crews that, we hope not.
I'm curious, why are they walking in your yard? Where are they coming from, and where are they going?
Chairman Thompson, we were all in college. We weren't a sound mine at the time.
Well, UT, they always waited till the paths were cut in the grass, and then they put the concrete sidewalk in. That was the best way to determine where to put sidewalks, is just follow the path.
I don't know.
........................
And I've got to say, for the most part, MTSU's a really good neighbor. They've owned that house now, I guess, 10 years probably, next to us, and they have been good neighbors.
So is it fair to say it's more deterrent to not cut through your yard than a safety factor or a security factor?
I like the fact that every now and then, some of the foot traffic sees our dogs, so...
So you'll put the dogs out there?
We let them run the front occasionally, so yeah, if that's more, maybe more deterrent, I'll buy that, that could be.
The reason I was asking, because you're not proposing like a set of gates across your driveway to secure your backyard, because people could still walk back in there, and then they're captured by the fence being all the way around them, house or whatever, and so this is...
Well, we have no way to, the fence between us and the universities got landscape gaps in it, so they're 10-foot, it's a wood fence, a shadow box, it's a 10-foot, actually a 10-foot shadow box fence, and so, you know, the gates, we thought about it, but we just didn't see that they served the purpose. Plus, it'd be a lot of trouble.
Yeah, your street's such a busy street, and people are flying by, and I can see, you know, you've got your dogs, they live there, and they're part of your security too, but I can see, and I know your dogs, running, I think a five-foot fence might keep them from getting out in traffic, whereas a four-foot would be a hurdle for them to challenge them.
What kind of dogs are they?
They're Brittany Spaniels, two sisters, two litter maids.
If it was a bunch of ferocious Chihuahuas, I think a four-foot fence would be just fine.
No, these are jumpers and busy dogs.
We've just always been dog people, so...
Jeff, I'm struggling a little bit about where the fence is going, and you mentioned it was just by the last step of the stairs, but it looks, in the picture, it looks like it's back behind the stairs.
We have two steps that go up to the walkway that goes to the front door, and so it will be at the top of the second step where the, where the walkway to the front door levels out. Like I said, it'll leave probably about a four-foot knoll there that frankly, we've had trouble, they were getting grass to grow anyway.
Yeah, so it shows here, but on here, unless it's...
There is a light on a post?
Right.
Where will the...
Well, that's about, that's, Chairman Thompson, that's about it.
That's, will the fence be immediately behind that, or?
That'll probably, that'll probably have to come down.
Well, just using it as a marker for us to understand where 20 feet back is, and we're talking 20 feet back from the curb or from the back edge of the sidewalk, the front?
Oh, it's, yeah, I think the ordinance calls for it to be from the curb, but there's, it's a little, I'm a little unclear, because there's a bike lane there too, which extends another, what are they, Matthew, three feet, the bike lanes?
Mm-hmm.
So, but the top of the knoll, the top of the step puts it at 20 feet, gets us, and keep in mind, coming out of the driveway, we're right in, right out now. We can't, we can't turn left because of the meeting.
Well, for two issues related to that, at the landing, if you have a gate in that fence at the top step of your sidewalk, you need a landing that allows you to get out the gate and not trip going down the steps. If you're standing on the steps to open the gate, that's a safety issue. The other thing is, is if you put this fence up and you put this landscaping in front of it, and you hope it's going to grow into the fence, creating a vegetative look partition, you won't be able to see safely to get out of the driveway.
But no, remember, we're right in, right out. Everything's going to be this side, and we're one way, so we will be looking left.
True.
And that's the purpose of the landscape triangle in the staff, the 20 feet back...
20, I know what it is here, Nashville is 30 feet.
It's 20 here, I believe. And that's the whole purpose of the 20-foot triangle, so it's built right, am I right on that?
See, our landscape ordinance does have the site triangle, and we apply it to fences as well, and it's 20 feet off of the edge of the travel lane, so I would, for, as a belts and suspenders approach, I would consider even the bike lane to be a part of the travel lane.
So that would put it 23, 22, 23, depending on where the bike lane is.
At the very least, I think we need to step the gates back to allow a landing at the top of that uppermost step, otherwise you may stumble.
That's a good idea, yeah, that makes sense.
Looking back at the minutes from the previous meeting, it does reference our zoning commission guidelines, as you may remember, and it does say that fences are generally not present in the district, but may be added if similar material to other fences and structures in the vicinity, and if they are constructed to not disrupt the visual harmony. So as far as I know, there are only two lots in the district that have fence in the front yard, one being the one that you mentioned, which was grandfathered, and the other one is also on Main Street, and it's about a three-foot-high fence. But aside from those fences, I don't know of any others.
There's at least two on...
The Weatherford's, the Weatherford's, and it's very high. The Weatherford's, the Weatherford's, and it's very high.
That's the one he's talking about, which was grandfathered.
It's very high, and it doesn't obstruct anything.
Two on Lytle, right, picket fences?
Yes.
Call your Critchlow House has an iron fence.
Yeah.
On, on Lytle?
Yeah.
Is it in the district?
No, across the street.
Yeah, so much of Lytle is not in the historic district. Most of it is not.
Well, the Weatherford's house is a good example of it not disrupting your view.
Well, it doesn't have any landscaping around it, does it?
No.
No, it's just a fence.
Yeah. Which is, I can see not putting landscape here, 'cause you're gonna, it might, might always get messy.
What other questions?
But I don't think going by as fast as people go and walking, it's not gonna impede my view or impression of their Tudor home.
I think, as we mentioned the last time, this came up two years ago, I understand, is just the precedent it sets, and might everybody start doing that? And that's where we're a little sensitive to it.
And your reluctance is visual?
Creating a secured compound for every house, and we were putting fences all over the backyards and side yards, and now, whereas it was built with hardly any fences probably before, and now we're getting to become a, it's true of every place, fencing everything. And that's the concern. If, if everybody started fencing their front yards like they fenced their backyards, if you get, go on Google Earth and look down in a neighborhood, you'll see all their backyard fences aligned, and everybody wants to be like the second person, because the first person has to put the ugly side in, and you wanna have the good side in as far as the design of it. And if you start doing that to your front yards, it's gonna look like a bunch of secure bunkers, and just the visual effect to an historic neighborhood is, is the concern, at least for me.
Well, Chairman Thompson, I think that this precedent, if you would be safe to set this precedent, anybody who has a house that's joined on two sides by MTSU, which I think that's just me, that's in the district, I, I'm not questioning, but I think that's a good pres, I think that precedent is okay. I'm okay with it. I would be okay with that precedent. It, it, again, we've, we're on a 25,000-student campus.
And how often does it come up? It hasn't come up?
No, it hasn't.
Much? Much? In two years?
Oh, I, I think far less at all.
All right.
But I just, you know, might other people on East Main, for instance, start putting up fences. I doubt it, and I really do.
Yeah.
But whenever you start precedents like doing plastic windows, we've always been a dead set against it, and this is just another thing. I'm not, I have no heartburn with you all or anything, it's just always precedent. We have to be very careful with it, 'cause it opens the door for anybody then to say, well, you gave it to them, why not us? And that's the, that's the concern.
Well, I guess, I, I see that.
I think the phrase "visual harmony," if I, the way I interpret that would be that it harmonizes with the neighboring properties, so that a fence and no fence do not harmonize. I think, I think of a fence as being something different from its neighbor, but more like if we were talking about music, you know, jazz, discord, rather than a chord, you know? So that's, that's, and, and again, the precedent, but I think, I think landscaping can provide an excellent barrier in both, you know, foot traffic, if there is much foot traffic. I'm, I'm guessing you haven't had, you know, break-ins or anything like that, but I don't know. But I think, I think landscaping can, can provide both visual and a psychological...
It just won't keep the dogs in the yard.
It won't? And think, too, Gil, we don't, we don't have jurisdiction over landscaping and different types.
Right.
They could set, go back 20 feet and put huge hydrangeas in, like I've got, that are huge and keep growing. What would that do to the visual effect? I mean, if we had a choice either or, if they said, okay, we're just gonna block it off with a, and boy, do those things grow? Or even little gym magnolias? They could line those up.
Well, landscaping, landscaping can be maintained on an annual basis.
I mean, it's the sort of thing, a fence is more a permanent fix.
I think it's less, it's just less obstructive than, than so many other things that you could put there if you wanted to just keep people out. And, but their house is so pretty, they don't wanna, and they're going to all this expense for the addition, so that they can stay there and enjoy it with their extended families. So, including the dogs.
Well, I would like the commission to consider the fence, and again, I understand the precedent, but as I said, I, I think we're probably the only house in the district that is joined on two sides by MTSU. And that, that's...
And look at the building that MTSU put up, right there in that picture. I mean, that, no, back to that last one. Yeah, the alumni.
Oh, that stairchild in the back.
Yeah, that, that, gosh awful.
Oh, it's awful.
Thing, you know? I mean, what they're doing is perfectly tasteful, you know, and MT, and, you know, the, they just make additions, maybe as they want, but...
Any further discussion? If not, the chair, welcome a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the five-foot fence as they show it.
Are we going to add to that, that it's back far enough to have a landing?
Excuse me?
Are we gonna add to that, or amend that to it's far enough back to have a landing before the, uh...
Gates?
Yes. With a landing.
Can I address that? Mr. Becker, what we'll probably have to do is kinda L-shaped, maybe three feet in, and recess the, the gate back from that step. That would make a landing, but I don't wanna move the whole fence back.
Right, right.
I, I, I wanna take full advantage of my 20-foot.
Let, let's, okay, for further discussion, when you L, you dog-leg it back toward the house?
Mm-hmm.
Let's just say your sidewalk's three feet. Are you gonna make then the dog leg three feet wide?
Mm-hmm.
Just for the gate?
That's a good idea.
Or would you make it like five feet to have some landscaping there? I just think tight to the fence is going to feel awkward when you walk through that dog leg back.
It could.
Yeah.
It could.
I mean, I would do like five or six feet to give you some landscaping on either side where it dog legs to the...
It could, that's a good idea.
Or at the, I've seen two where they angle it on a 45-degree to feel more generous.
Seen that on the corner of the lot, and we'll probably do that on our neighbor's corner to make sure that she has full view to the left. We will angle that in her corner, although, again, that, if we build at the top of the hole, that's the 20 feet required that...
I, I would suggest that, that any motion, you know, considering Middle Tennessee Boulevard is a street that carries a lot of traffic and sometimes goes faster than it should, but that the fence location be subject to the review and approval of our engineering and transportation departments, just to make sure that the, that the site distance lines are, are adequately provided for.